The meeting will now come to order. And we have the honor and the privilege to have the members of Boy Scout Troop 551 from the Narstar District. They're in the audience, and they are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, gentlemen.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you, gentlemen. (laughing)
Sit on a nail or something?
No, now the Boy Scouts are gonna sue us. Thanks, Doctor. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
I mean, here.
Councilmember Burkett.
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Here.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Here.
Councilmember Dolan.
What did I say? Here.
Councilmember Stanger.
Here.
Councilmember Quinn.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there a...
A move for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of November 12, 2013.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The Journal is approved. Bid openings? We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, there are tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this evening, so we'll move to other communications. Under Other Communications, item number one, all districts.
Receive, file, and refer to the Committee of the Whole, and that will be the order.
Item number two, all districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number three.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. That same motion through item number five, and that will be the order.
Item number six, third district.
Same motion.
So ordered.
Item number seven, third district.
Receive, file, and the matter be referred to the County Executive for review and response.
So ordered.
Item number eight, sixth district.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number nine, fifth district.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number 10, fifth and sixth districts.
Receive and file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 11.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 15, and that will be the order.
Item number 16, third district.
Same motion.
So ordered.
Item number 17.
Same motion, and same motion through item number 18, and that will be the order. Please read the add-ons.
Item number one, first district. Receive and file.
So ordered. All right. Mr. County Executive, do you have a report?
Madam Chair, I have my report.
Okay. We have no reports of special committees this evening, so we will move to the public forum. And I do ask that you keep your comments limited to three minutes, and I'm going to ask our administrative assistant or director, Jen Frank, to please read the cards. I'm having a little trouble with my eyes this evening, so she will read your names.
First speaker this evening is Barbara Stewart.
Yes, come up to the podium, please.
Good evening. I want to thank the councilman Pat Dolan for the lead and taking the lead in sponsoring the Complete Streets Ordinance. I also want to thank Councilman Steve Stanger for cosponsoring the Complete Street Ordinance that facilitates and enhances coordination, cooperation, and collaboration. I respectfully ask the full council to please support and vote for this long-needed Complete Streets Ordinance in St. Louis County. Voters have twice taxed themselves to create a more walkable, bikeable St. Louis. In 2000, 68 percent of voters in the region showed their support for better biking and walking by voting for the creation of Great Rivers Greenways Tax District, providing $10 million a year. In April 2013, 53 percent of voters in St. Louis County showed their support for better biking and walking by voting to double the sales tax collected by the Great Rivers Greenways Tax District to $20 million per year. Presently, bike paths, bike lanes, and bicycle striping are not allowed on all of St. Louis County-owned roads. The St. Louis County policy prohibits and prohibits any connectivity to other bike trail and paths and Great Rivers Greenways trails throughout the entire metropolitan area. To date, the consequence of the present administration in St. Louis County is zero miles of connectivity on St. Louis County-owned roads. To date, roughly $130 million tax dollars have been spent through GRG, creating bike and pedestrian facilities, both on road facilities and off-road trails throughout the metropolitan area. However, St. Louis County's policy of not allowing any bike facility on all St. Louis County-owned roads undermines GRG and municipal efforts to create a network of connected bike trails and paths throughout the region. If we go another 13 years under the present St. Louis County policy, we will have spent $390 million tax dollars through GRG with 0 percent connectivity on St. Louis County-owned roads that intersect every municipality in St. Louis County. Please vote to pass the Complete Streets Ordinance sponsored by Councilmen Dolan and Stanger, and stop undermining the votes of the majority of citizens taken in St. Louis County in 2000 and 2013. It's time to honor and respect the majority of voters in St. Louis County and our democracy. We voted not once but twice to be able to ride bicycles and walk to work, school, and store, and friends' houses throughout all of the St. Louis County-owned roads. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want to... Councilwoman Hazel Erby is also gonna co-sponsor this bill, so I just want it to be on record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's very important in St. Louis. Safety. Thank you. Very important. Thank you.
Next speaker is Phil Valco.
Good evening. My name is Phil Valco, and I'm here on behalf of Washington University. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm here to make some comments around the Complete Streets Bill. So as a major regional employer, the university strongly supports our regional partners' efforts to enhance safe and accessible transportation options. As a growing and landlocked institution, as many of you realize, transportation is probably one of the most complicated and important parts of our daily operation. The university has established goals to reduce single-occupant vehicle commuters to campus and is working diligently to achieve those goals. Our success in achieving those goals depends in no small part on the surrounding transportation landscape. It's critical that our students, faculty, and staff, especially those living within a few miles of campus and/or transit service, have a number of viable and safe transportation options when they leave their homes, including transit, safe routes to walk to campus, and safe routes to bike to campus. The Complete Streets approach to infrastructure design, operation, and maintenance is a critical component of ensuring this diversity of safe transportation options. As a piece of our commitment, the university distributes nearly 20,000 U-Passes to our faculty, staff, and students on an annual basis, and that provides free access to the Metro Bus system and the MetroLink system, and it's heavily used. On a daily basis, thousands of our community members are actually traveling to campus on Metro Bus or MetroLink, and at some point during that commute, whether they're going to a park-and-ride or they're catching a bus at their corner, they are pedestrians coming to our campus. And that fact underscores the importance of having a strong integrated transportation network that allows users to transition from walking to transit to their car to biking. So the Complete Streets approach, again, is a really important way to make sure that there is an integrated way of thinking about transportation. In the last 10 years, bicycle ridership in our community has grown dramatically. In fact, we're actually having a hard time keeping up with bike parking needs on campus. With this growing and dedicated population of bike commuters, it's more important than ever that the transportation network is designed to ensure that our riders can safely travel from their homes to their place of study and work, to local grocers, to their place of worship, and so on. Transportation design that supports accessibility for our community members who have mobility restrictions is also very important to the university. Complete Streets align as well with our sustainability goals, to support low and no-emission forms of transportation, greatly reducing individuals and collectively our region's contribution to poor air quality and climate change. So we understand that the bill that's under consideration was developed through a compromise, and we commend those involved in that process to develop a workable approach to the bill. We encourage the council to support this important bill and other initiatives that enhance safe, accessible, and multimodal travel options throughout our region. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Charles Chapard.
Good evening. I'm Charlie Chapard, and I grew up in the city of Clayton and moved out of the city for many years and just returned about six months ago. I too'd like to thank the councilman for cosponsoring the Safety First Ordinance. As a Clayton citizen, I'd ask full county council to support this ordinance and work towards 100 percent connectivity for the county roads versus the 0 percent connectivity that currently exists. I believe about 75 percent of the Clayton citizens voted in favor of Prop. P., which appropriated incremental funds to sponsor this type of initiative. So funds appear to be available. Lastly, I just have a quick story, short story, true story, that I believe summarizes the need for passage of this ordinance. I live in the Demone neighborhood, and I drive a big Yukon XL. About one month ago, I was heading westbound on Clayton Road, and I was forced to squeeze a biker next to a parked car in front of the St. Louis Bread Company. The long and short of it is, we got down to Big Ben, red light, and the biker got into my face, and I immediately got into his face. Road rage, if you will. Yeah, I've reflected on the situation after it happened, and I kind of realized that neither one of us was really at fault. Rather, it was the lack of proper infrastructure that caused the incident. So I think that story has a lot of merit and deserves your consideration as you look and investigate this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Willie Jordan.
Councilmembers, my name is Willie Jordan. I am the executive director of the Metro-St. Louis Equal Housing Opportunity Council and a resident of unincorporated North County, right near Castle Point. And I wanted to speak in support of this bill number one, which used to be 238, for safe streets in particular, mostly because I do see an extreme need when you're going up and down Chambers. In particular, there's quite a few really, really, really well-used bus routes there. And for the most part, there's quite a few pedestrians, and they cross the street a lot. And one of the things about the lighting and not having a whole lot of crosswalks outside of the streets where the lights are at is that when you get to this time of the year, about 5:00, it gets pretty dark, and I don't think when they woke up in the morning, they were thinking about reflective clothing. And unfortunately, what happens is when you see those teddy bears posted up on those light poles and stop signs, sometimes it's because they got hit, and it wasn't necessarily the car driver's fault because they couldn't see them. But I've come to expect, you know, it's gonna be a little bit like Frogger on certain streets, West Florissant all the way up and down, Chambers up and down. And then also, for persons with disabilities, you see quite a few new hub arounds that are back and forth across the street. And I'm hoping that passing this bill would really make a difference for pedestrians and persons with disabilities as they're going across the street, because I notice more and more and more it's happening. And I think lighting, lanes, and other places for them to cross that are lit make it very obvious that someone's gonna be crossing there, even though a lot of times people don't wear reflective clothing. I think this might help them out a lot. And I want to thank you, Councilmember Dolan and Erby, for sponsoring the bill, and I'm hoping that the council will pass it. I think it'll be a good thing for the residents of St. Louis County.
Thank you. Is that it? Yes, ma'am. Okay. That concludes the public forum, so we will move to introduction of bills.
Bill number 258, introduced by Councilmember Burkett, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept two grants totaling up to $251,105 to the Missouri Secretary of State, appropriating the same for support of various election expenditures, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 259, introduced by Councilmember Burkett, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $169,500 from the East-West Gateway Council of Governments, appropriating the same for funding a police sergeant's position to act as critical infrastructure protection coordinator for the St. Louis Terrorism Early Warning Group and for materials and services related to the St. Louis Fusion Center, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 260, introduced by Councilmember Quinn, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Eagle Energy Incorporated for lease of office and warehouse space in the Spirit Edison Center. Bill number 261, introduced by Councilmember Quinn, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Global Import Solutions LLC for lease of office and warehouse space in the Spirit Edison Center. Bill number 262, introduced by Councilmember Quinn, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with ProMotion Incorporated for lease of office and warehouse space in the Spirit Edison Center. Bill number 263, introduced by Councilmember Erby, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Bi-State Development Agency doing business as Metro for construction and maintenance of non-standard improvements along West Florissant Avenue. Bill number 264, introduced by Councilmember Burkett, an ordinance amending ordinance number 25,015 by repealing and reenacting Sections 2 and 3 thereof pertaining to a contract with St. Louis College of Pharmacy for services of licensed clinical pharmacies for the Department of Health. Bill number 265, introduced by Councilmember Burkett, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart a sum of $700,000 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund for overtime pay for police department employees. Bill number 266, introduced by Councilmember Burkett, an ordinance amending Chapter 701 Title VII St. Louis County Revised Ordinance since 1974 as amended Department of Police by repealing and reenacting Section 701.080 pertaining to charges for certain services. Bill number 267, introduced by Councilmember Quinn, an ordinance authorizing St. Louis County, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, Series A and Series B, in an aggregate amount, in an aggregate principal amount, not to exceed $470 million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of an industrial development project in the county, approving a plan for the project, and authorizing the county executive to enter into certain agreements and take other certain actions in connections with the issuance of the bonds. Bill number 268, introduced by Councilmember Stanger, an ordinance amending ordinance number 25,534 by repealing and reenacting Section 3 pertaining to PC 20-13A1 Locker Rental Self-Storage. Bill number 269, introduced by Councilmember Burkett, an ordinance amending Chapter 1103 Title XI St. Louis County Revised Ordinance since 1974 as amended the Plumbing Code by repealing and reenacting Sections 1103.140, 1103-403, 1103-406, and 1103-407, all pertaining to various provisions of the Plumbing Code. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you. Perfection of bills?
Bill number 8, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Hold, please.
So ordered.
Bill number 234, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold.
So ordered.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 238, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, Stanger, and Erby.
I move to perfect substitute bill number 1 for bill number 238.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 238 is perfected.
Bill number 244, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
Okay. At this time, I move to perfect bill number 244. Before I get a second, I would like to remind the council that we held this last week because there is some concerns about future contracts with Regis. This is for a one-year lease, and I would suggest that whoever becomes chairman next year, that that be a priority of setting up a Committee of the Whole meeting, because you would need to get started early on this if you want to look at other options.
Madam Chair, if I could maybe address it to Pat Rennington. What's our... Even though there's four renewal options on it, does that give us an out to bring it to as an RFP? Or being that we're under contract, are we...
So it's a one-year contract, and you can choose, the county can choose to renew or to exercise the option or not.
So do we need a Committee of the Whole? Or how does that work to ask for an RFP, to ask for, to go out for bids?
If the council wants to go out for bids next year...
Well, this year, we're saying we're at, we're out of time.
Right.
So what's the process we need to do next year to start looking at maybe our other options?
Well, you can informally ask the Director of Administration to look at other possibilities and talk with her. You can have a Committee of the Whole meeting and make a council recommendation. I mean, there are all sorts of ways we go forward with the new procedures.
Excuse me, just, I'll give you... It would seem to me, since this is a major concern to the members of the council, that you would want to have a Committee of the Whole, and you would want to hear, and obviously, I think you need to find out who else might be interested in the bidding process, and probably need to hear from the people from Regis as to what, you know, what is, what is being offered to us at this present time.
Correct.
So, Councilman Wassinger.
The way I'm reading this is there is a stipulation in here with an option for up to four additional one-year terms. May we not just strike that right now? Well, I think it would be better to have a subbill if that's what you want to do. I don't know how the rest of you feel about it, but it seems to make sense to me that we adopt a contract for one year. I think everybody, from what I can tell, has agreed to that. And then we don't have any confusion about options, and it'll be, it'll come back timely next year, if not before.
Then, you're... That's why I didn't ask for a second. So I would need to hold this. And who's gonna bring the subbill forward? Me? What, who?
Whoever wants to.
Councilman Wassinger can bring the subbill forward.
A subbill just deleting the options for renewals? Correct. I will bring that in, Madam Chair.
Okay, and it'll be under your name.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So I will hold bill number 244, and that will be the order.
Bill number 254, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
I move for perfection of bill number 254.
Second.
I mean, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 254 is perfected.
Bill number 255, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
I move to perfect bill number 255.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 257 is perfected. Final passage of bills?
Madam Chair, I'd like to suspend the rules and advance bill number 257 to the final passage order of business.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number, what was it, 257?
257.
Has been moved to the final passage of bills.
This time, I'd like to, I'd like to take up bill number 257.
Madam Chair, may I read the bill for perfection?
Please read for final passage, please.
Bill number 257, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd like to take it up and move final passage of bill number 257.
A second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 257, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 257 is finally passed.
Bill number 180... Oops. Going to final passage?
I have final passage.
Bill number 181, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
Please hold. And that'll be the order.
Bill number 241, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
I move, excuse me, I move for final passage of bill number 241.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 241, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 245 is finally passed.
Bill number 246, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
At this time, I move for final passage of bill number 246.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 246, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 246 is finally passed.
Bill number 247, introduced by Councilmember Quinn.
I'd like to take it up and move final passage of bill number 247.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 247, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 245 is finally passed.
Bill number 246, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
At this time, I move for final passage of bill number 246.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 248, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 248 is finally passed.
Bill number 249, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
At this time, I move for final passage of bill number 249.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 243, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 243 is finally passed.
Bill number 245, introduced by Councilmember Quinn.
I'd like to take it up and move final passage of bill 245.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 255 is perfected.
Bill number 256, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
I move to perfect bill number 256.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 256 is perfected.
Bill number 257, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd like to take it up and move for perfection of bill number 257.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 257 is perfected. Final passage of bills?
Madam Chair, I'd like to suspend the rules and advance bill number 257 to the final passage order of business.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number, what was it, 257?
257.
Has been moved to the final passage of bills.
At this time, I'd like to, like to take up bill number 257.
Madam Chair, may I read the bill for perfection?
Check.
Please read for final passage, please.
Bill number 257, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd like to take it up and move final passage of bill number 257.
A second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby. Councilmember Burkett.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 257, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 257 is finally passed.
Bill number 180, oops, going to final passage.
I, we're final passage.
Bill number 181, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
Please hold. And that will be the order.
Bill number 241, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
I move, excuse me, I move for final passage of bill number 241.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 241, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 241 is finally passed.
Bill number 242, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
243? Well...
242.
I'm ahead of myself now. I move for final passage of bill number 242.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 242, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 242 is finally passed.
Bill number 243, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
I move for final passage of bill number 243.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 243, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 243 is finally passed.
Bill number 245, introduced by Councilmember Quinn.
Like to take it up. I move final passage of bill 245.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 245, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 245 is finally passed.
Bill number 246, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
At this time, I move for final passage of bill number 246.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 246, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 246 is finally passed.
Bill number 247, introduced by Councilmember Quinn.
Like to take it up. I move final passage of bill number 247.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 247, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 247 is finally passed.
Bill number 248, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
At this time, I move for final passage of bill number 248.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 248, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 248 is finally passed.
Bill number 249, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
At this time, I move for final passage of bill number 249.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 249, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 249 is finally passed.
Bill number 250, introduced by Councilmembers Burkett, Wassinger, and Stanger.
At this time, I move for final passage of bill number 250.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 250, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 250 is finally passed.
Bill number 251, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
I move for final passage of bill number 251.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 251, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 251 is finally passed.
Bill number 252, introduced by Councilmembers Burkett and Dolan.
At this time, I move for final passage of bill number 252.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.